Yeah, you don't need to.
Steve, you're in the.
You know, Mike.
Good evening, and welcome to the City Council Meeting on September the 8th. If I could have an order, please, we'll get underway. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First off, I'd like to introduce our new City Clerk, Courtney Crowson, to you. And first order of business will be to swear her ear. I'll turn that over to Dale and Courtney.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Courtney Crowson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
Prescribed for the office of City Clerk by law.
Prescribed for the office of City Clerk by law.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And all provisions of laws in this state.
And all provisions of laws in this state.
Affecting charter cities.
Affecting charter cities.
And the ordinances of the City of Fulton, Missouri.
And the ordinances of the City of Fulton, Missouri.
And that I will faithfully conduct myself in the office.
And that I will faithfully conduct myself in the office.
To which I was appointed.
To which I was appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Very good, thank you. Welcome aboard, Courtney. Hope your hand's in good shape. Okay, well now, if you'd call the roll, please.
Okay. Mr. Shilin.
Present.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Ms. Case Snook.
Present.
Mrs. Reclu.
Present.
Mr. Shiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Vaughn.
There.
Mr. West.
Here.
And Mr. Cannel.
Here.
Thank you. We have seven present and one absent.
If you all rise with me, please. Pastor Williamson listens this evening, or leaves us in the invocation, thank for being here.
Praise you, sir. Our heavenly Father, we just give you thanks for the beauty of the community that we live in and that we call home. For your providential care and the way of life that all of us enjoy. We're grateful, Lord, for those who lead us each day. We're grateful, Lord, for those who protect us, keep us safe. And in times such as these, I especially tonight, want to pray for the safety of our police officers and our firefighters and EMTs, all who care and oversee the safety of the public. And I pray, Lord, as they do their duty and work, that you'll protect them from harm and danger. We pray, Lord, on a wider scale for the nation, and we pray tonight for California, for the fires that have been out of control for seven weeks, and the drought that they're experiencing. We ask your blessings on them and a resolution for their needs. Tonight, Lord, we focus on this session, and we ask you, Lord, to bless our mayor, council persons, those who are the administrators of this city, those who lead departments. And I pray, Lord, for the work that's done tonight here, the discussions that are held and the decisions that are made, that they'll be in keeping with your will. As I close this prayer, I continue to lift up those that are attached to the city family who have ongoing need for health care and maintenance. That would include but not be limited to Mayor Benton, Gabriel Polston, Chief Myers, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu. And I pray, Lord, tonight, for Mr. Shilin as well, as he continues to heal. Thank you for your love, your grace, and your blessings on our lives in Christ we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. At the beginning of each council meeting, we've set a time aside for comments from folks that would like to share with the council on issues within the city. And we just ask that you come forward, give us your name and your address, and then limit your comments to no longer than five minutes. So at this time, I'll call anyone who would like to come forward and share with the council to please do so at this time.
Thank you, council. Leroy Benton, thanks, mayor. I just wanted to come up here and speak with you guys again over the issues that we have with the fire department and with our firefighters. There is a, you will probably see this in the future, it's a part of the salary survey that was conducted by the City of Fulton. I want to remind you that these are starting wages. These are not what the department makes as an average. So when you look at these, this is what a starting firefighter makes, or a starting engineer makes, or a starting fire captain makes. So I know that, you know, it would seem to be led to believe in the newspaper article that we were above average on our fire engineers. And whenever you take starting wages and then you average our whole department with, then yes, we're going to be above average. But if you take a starting engineer, which Mr. James Noah was just promoted this year as an engineer, and he's making $11 an hour, that is $27,000 a year. That is nowhere close to average. So I just want to inform you guys to make sure that you look at this document and you understand what it is. Because I called these fire departments, I've talked to these fire chiefs, and they told me what these numbers were. And it is starting pay only. Also, on the other page that was presented, they were already figuring in the starting wage for firefighters, what you guys just approved at the last council meeting. So those were not the numbers that we were using whenever we was in negotiations. So I just wanted to point that out, that, to make sure that whenever you're sitting down at the council retreat, that you know that the number's in front of you, what they are. And I'm willing to offer, my service is free of charge, to represent the firefighters at your council retreat. So that way, if you do have any questions or concerns that's going on with the fire department, I'd be more than happy to step in and inform you guys. I want to let you know that this week, another firefighter got, accepted another position at another fire department. We are at 50% of this fire department has moved on in three years. That is unacceptable. And you, as the council, have the right to make sure that that does not happen, that this stops. It's not fair to the taxpayers, it's not fair to these people in this community. They're showing you what they think. I don't know what else you need. This is the second meeting that you've had people show up, drive through Fulton. There's 100-plus signs out there. This community wants a fire department, and it wants to maintain the trained firefighters that they paid for. I just want to reiterate that we need to make sure that our community is safe. And it's your job as the council to make sure that that happens. You're the governing body. You have the right to say that if you want us to sit down and continue negotiation, you have the right to tell Mr. Johnson to sit down and continue negotiations. Don't allow some lawyer in St. Louis to determine what happens in the City of Fulton. It's not right. That guy does not have to go to Walmart every day and see your constituents at Walmart. And you got to explain to them that, well, we've, half of our department has left in three years, they've moved on, so there's our tax dollars going away again. It's not fair to them. And we are still, the union, the fire union is still willing to sit down and find out what it is exactly you guys want. Because the August 11th meeting, I know the, I was sitting here, I'm well aware that the negotiation team stepped up here and told you guys that this is the best deal for the City of Fulton and for the fire union. That comes directly from your negotiation team. This is the best deal. So I do not understand why we've gone two meetings now, working on our third meeting now, and this has not been taken care of, whenever you had a negotiation team that was appointed to take care of this issue. I want to thank you again for your time, and I hope we can come to a resolution. Have a good evening.
Thank you. I'll make another call for anyone who would like to share with the council over an issue within the city. If you'd please come forward and state your name and your address. Invite you to do that now.
My name is Sherri Zidell. I reside at 1215 Lane Street in Fulton, Missouri. My maiden name is Baumgartner. I know several of you, several of you know my parents. I come tonight asking questions that you need to ask yourself. Why is a city with a population of 12,000 and some being compared to a city with a population of 371,000? That's correct, we should not be. Why are we, a city with a population of 12,000 and something, not being compared to a city with a population of 13,000, which is more in our area? Again, that is correct. This is where we should be compared. Who paints the fire hydrants around the city? Several times, when they were painting the fire hydrants, I saw the firefighters. What were they wearing? They were wearing their dress uniforms. Why? They're going to get paint on them. Hmm, how much does that cost? A lot of money, when you stop and think. The fire department goes on emergency calls, whether it be gas, electrical, fire, auto. They even go on some of the police calls, depending on what the situation is. Does the other departments go on fire calls? Maybe the police department to control the crowd. Do you treat the City of Fulton Police Department the same as you do the fire department? No. Why? Because the police get shot up, but the firefighters just go into fires? Really, what's the difference when you weigh the balance? I've always wondered this, why do we have bubbles coming out of the fountain? Why do we have a fountain at the city hall? Who pays for that water? I think the city does. I think we, as taxpayers, do. The roundabout has $1,000 donated from the Fulton Garden Club, and 500 from the Rotary, and 500 from Ameren. It costs the city $1,000, I think, for flowers is what I read? So it's important to look prettier rather than safety? Wow. A job standing at a register, taking items over a computer, or taking money for food, pays more than holding a huge, heavy hose, wearing fire gear, going into hot buildings of over 500 degrees? Wow. Even a bank tailor gets more money to sit down in air conditioning and deal with just money. Your homes, I think, some of them, cost more than that. I have done some research for you, and the way I see it, Fulton firefighters, well, when you look on it, they say they start out at $16. Well, they are starting out at $65 for the year, that's $17,992. With a city with a population of 13,746, they start out at $23,500. And a city with a population of $13,010 start out at $30,000 a year. They respond to all emergencies, whether it be accidents, vehicles, hazardous material, water rescue, medical fire. And I think some of you work for a, work for the union. One city of 13,010 has 20 full-time and nine part-time and zero volunteer. The city that I looked at has 13,746, 28 of them are full-time, zero part-time, and zero volunteer. Fulton, who has a 12,760 population, has 24 full-time. I don't know how many part-time, and several volunteer, because I live on a street that has several. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on an issue within the city? That they'd like to address? I'll ask you to come forward at this time. Yes, sir. If you'd come to the light, please.
Ryan Duncan, I'm the area director for Muscular Dystrophy Association for Kansas City District. We represent 65 counties in central Missouri, including Callaway. I'm a resident of Fulton. I live at 517 Canterbury Drive. We've just come off of Labor Day weekend. The IAFF has long been a partner with Muscular Dystrophy Association. The fine men and women of the Fulton Fire Department have just come off a weekend collecting Phil the Boot to help us fight 43 neuromuscular diseases. They've collected $3,500 to assist us in continuing our fight. You are more than aware of all that they do in service for you. I wanted you to be aware of what they do in service for us. Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you. Mayor, council, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. At this time, I'll ask if anyone else would like to address the council on an issue within the city. If you'd come forward at this time, please. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll assume that everyone that had a different issue has done that. I appreciate all your comments. We will now move on with our agenda. We have considered unfinished business, and it looks like our first item is the warehouse facility.
The new city warehouse facility. Many of you got to tour the new city warehouse facility here this evening. As you can see, it's coming along pretty nicely. As far as dollars go, you've seen the buildings, you've seen the concrete, you've seen all the work out there that's been done and erected. As far as dollar figure goes, we're about 75%. Anybody have any particular questions?
No questions?
I had one question. What's our plan to either liquidate or demo the old facility? I know that it's going to, it's an old structure that could be a safety hazard for kids, or, you know, animals, whoever.
We want to totally vacate the premises, totally. Which is going to be pretty hard, because we have 80 years worth of accumulation, some of those, 70 years. But we want to get it all out, and then we'll make some attempt to market it. If that doesn't succeed, then sometime we will be responsible for demolition.
So just play it my ear.
Yeah, I think another element to that, Lo, is we might have to make a decent effort to make sure that it's cleaned up nicely. I don't know if Bill mentioned that, but cleaned up good as far as pollutants.
Right.
Board up the windows. The new place looks great, though.
Yeah.
Really impressive.
Well, thank you for taking us on our tour.
Thank you, Congress. A call for new business. Kai Omega Sorority from William Woods requests permission for a 5K benefit in October. Is anyone here present? Can we talk about that?
There she is.
Please come forward. Thank you. She is.
Hello, my name's Jessica, and I'm the community service chair for Kai Omega at William Woods University. And we were wanting permission to hold a 5K run for Make-A-Wish at Memorial Park. Every year, we support Make-A-Wish. I know many of you are familiar with Super Sam. It's through that organization that we were able to raise enough money to grant his wish, and we would like to do the same this year for another kid. And we would ask that the reservation fee be waived as well, since it's such a great cause. But that's all, we would just like permission to use the park for the 5K.
Is there any questions? There's not a route shown here, is it all within the park?
Yeah, it's been, this is the third annual, and it's always been at Memorial Park along the trail.
No city streets being used, any of that sort of thing?
No, nothing like that.
No police support or anything like that?
Nope, we don't really expect it to cause any problems at all.
Okay. I move for permission that the fee be waived.
Second.
Second.
Very good, I have a motion and a second to approve the request from Kai Omega. Is there any further discussion on that motion?
Just one, do we know whether, is the pavilion available that day? Have we already reserved it, or?
We have asked for the reservation already, yes.
Not any further discussion, call for the question.
Jessica, what's your, I'm sorry, what's your last name?
Doran, it's D-O-R-A-N.
Okay, thank you.
If there's not any further discussion, all those in favor of approving the request, please signify a saying yes. Yes. All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good cause. Now, consider Resolution 3423, which is a resolution which approves the tax credit agreement with the State of Missouri for the Brick District Playhouse. Councilman Vaughn, would you please present Resolution 3423?
A Resolution 3243, a resolution authorizing the mayor, on the behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents related to tax credit agreement set forth by the Missouri Development Finance Board, the City of Fulton, Missouri, and the Callaway Arts Council, DBNA, Brick District Playhouse, and establish an effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 3243 at tonight's meeting.
Second. Very good, thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 3243. Ms. Kathy, would you like to talk to us a little more about this, please?
The process is pretty simple. We talked to the director over at the Missouri Finance Board today. And the way the funds will flow is the donations will be made to the Missouri Finance Board. They will hold those donations. Then, once the Brick District signs off on an invoice, the city also signs off, we will submit it to them, they will send to the city those monies, okay? Then we will pay that vendor. We're going to keep the money in a separate account earmarked for the Brick District so that it doesn't get commingled with anything else. So am I having questions?
How does that work on the donator's side, as far as it gives a tax credit?
The Missouri Finance Board will grant the tax credit. So we won't be involved in that part of it at all. And I believe it's an income tax credit.
And I guess how is that different than a tax rebate?
A deduction?
Yeah, deduction's what I'm trying to say.
A tax credit comes off the amount of taxes that you owe?
And a deduction just reduces the amount of taxes.
Reduces your taxable income. So it's a much better deal.
That's right off the top.
It's right off, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's sweet.
It comes off the tax, not the income.
Not your income that your taxes calculated on.
So if somebody donates $100, they will get $50 off of their tax bill, off of the taxes they owe, because it's tax credit. If it's a tax deduction, it would drop their taxable income by $100.
There you go. It allows you, as the donor, as the donor, the ability to designate where your tax dollars are actually going, rather than going into the state office.
And theoretically, if you were in a 35% tax bracket, you'd get, you actually will end up paying out of pocket 15%?
No. With the 6% in the state of Missouri.
Say your tax bill is $600, and you gave $1,000, you, 500 of that, you could pay with your taxes, you'd send the state a $100 check.
So the amount of your credit is contingent upon the amount of your donation. Your credit's going to be 50% of your donation, if you donate $1,000, or if you donate $100,000. One can think.
Because if you were doing it as deduction, you'd only get six bucks back, or 6% max. Okay, any other questions?
I can understand that better.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve Resolution 3243. All those in favor of approving this resolution, please signify a saying yes. Yes. All those opposed, no. We'll now move on to ordinances. We do not have any first reading ordinances. We do have a couple of second reading ordinances. First ordinance is Bill Number 1428, which has to do with changing some parking spaces over on Hickman Avenue. Councilman Shiverdecker, if you would present this bill, please.
Yes, sir. If there's no objections, I'll go ahead and present it for a third time tonight, too. Bill Number 1428, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 17, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 6, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Division 1, Generally, Section 17-260, Parking on Certain Streets Prohibited or Limited, Fulton City Code, by adding an additional street and establishing an effective date on the east side of Hickman Avenue from West 7th Street to Water Crossing. I make a motion that this bill be advanced for a third reading at tonight's meeting.
Second. Very good, I have a motion and a second to advance Bill Number 1428 for third reading. Is there any further discussion in the motion?
Prior to the temporary no parking signs being placed up in that area, it had been discussed with the school system that this would take effect November 1st. So just, I want to make it clear that this ordinance is going to take effect November 1st. The temporary no parking signs are going to stay up, so it really doesn't make a difference, but that was, would have been discussed.
Any further discussion? All those in favor advancing Bill 1428, please signify a saying yes. Yes. All those opposed, no. Very good. Councilman Shiverdecker, if you'd please present 1428 for third reading.
Yes, sir. Bill Number 1428, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 17, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 6, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Division 1, Generally, Section 17-260, Parking on Certain Streets Prohibited or Limited, Fulton City Code, by adding an additional street and establishing an effective date. I make a motion that we advance Bill Number 1428 for final approval.
Thank you. Very good, I have a motion and a second to advance Bill Number 1428 for final. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify a saying yes. Yes. All those opposed, no. Thank you. You've heard Bill Number 1428 presented three times. It's now time for final consideration. As the clerk reads the roll, if you'd please signify your approval by yes and your opposition by no.
Okay, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Cannel?
Yes.
Mr. Shilin?
Yes.
Okay, we have seven affirmative, one absent.
Very good, thank you. Bill Number 1428 is approved. We'll now consider Bill Number 1429, which is an ordinance that approves five parking spaces at 510 Market Street. Councilman Moore, if you'd please present 1429, title only, second reading.
Okay, if there's no objections, I will place this on third reading at tonight's meeting, too. Bill Number 1429, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 17, Motor Vehicle and Traffic, Article 6, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Division 1, Generally, Section 17-260, Parking on Certain Streets Prohibited or Limited, Fulton City Code, by adding five parking spaces in front of the former police station located at 510 Market Street from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Monday through Friday. I move this for a third reading at the night's meeting, the title only.
Very good, I have a motion and a second to advance Bill Number 1429. Is there any further discussion of this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify a saying yes. Yes. All those opposed, no. Very good. Councilman Moore, if you'd please present 1429 for third reading.
Bill Number 1429, An Ordinance Amending-
Bill Number 1429, an ordinance amended Chapter 17, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 6, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Division 1, generally Section 17-260, parking on certain streets prohibited or limited, Fulton City Code by adding five parking spaces in front of the former police station at 510 Market Street from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Monday through Friday. I move this for final passage at the night's meeting by title only.
Second. Very good, thank you. Bill Number 1429's been advanced for third reading. Excuse me, for final consideration, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of advancing 1429, please signify by saying yes. All those opposed, no.
No.
We, you've heard Bill Number 1429 presented three times, it's now time for final consideration. As clerk reads a roll, if you'd say yes or no to the roll call, appreciate it.
Okay, Mrs. Recle?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. West?
No.
Mr. Cannel?
Yes.
Mr. Shylan?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we have six affirmative, one negative, and one absent.
Very good, thank you. Bill Number 1429 is approved. Very good. All right, next on the agenda is appointments. I do not have any this evening. And announcements. City council retreat reminder is, well, will be next Tuesday at 5:30. And we'll just do it here at City Hall in Executive Chamber. Chamber. If there's a yes.
Well, I'll wait till you finish. I'll wait till you.
I'm sorry?
It was a different subject, I'll wait till you finish.
Oh, okay. Okay. Any other announcements that I haven't mentioned? Okay, very good. I do not have a need for an executive session. Any other discussion? Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say that I understand what the firemen are wanting, but I think in all fairness to them, we had made a decision, and I think from the 11th meeting, we said that we'd discuss it in 2016 when we review rest of the city employee's salary. I mean, if they want to keep them in the council meetings, all right, but I think that they're setting you and they don't want to answer what rest of council might think. So I'm just thinking that the council are here on the same page I'm on when we do next year when we did a budget, that we're not going to make any definite changes right now.
That's, if anyone has anything else to say, I, you know, I think that is the position of the council. We will consider salary adjustments as we can and do the best we can for you during the next budget cycle, and of which we're beginning to enter into that cycle right now. Again, appreciate your solidarity, very impressive. But at this point, you know, we don't, we don't see that we can do anything different than what we've done. Okay, anything else? Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to say thank you for coming to our meetings. Continue if you can. I'm with all the city people, they're always invited, and I'd like to see more people show up to share in our city. I'm working here for the people. What I choose to say and do is for you. And I'm talking about all the people in Fulton. And I just want to thank everyone for showing their concern and their support for our city and our police and our fire. Thank you.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. So move. Very good. I have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes. Very good, thank you.